This meeting is being recorded.
All right. Calling to order the work session for the board of education. We will, we now have a quorum. And let's start with introduction of guests.
Lisa Stanton, Vice President of Operations and Finance in the CFO.
Amy Harris, Vice President of People, Culture and Safety.
Juliette Long, Vice President of Student Learning Success.
Nicole Segred, Dean of Enrollment Management.
Lisa Parks, Dean of Business and Workforce Development.
Kelly Noyes, Director of Marketing.
Dylan Ayers, Engineering Sports Specialist.
Mike McClure, Assistant Director of IT Management.
Cassin Claire, Executive Director, Rogue Community College Foundation.
David Kohler, Dean of Instruction and Public Service.
April Hamlin, Dean of Student Success.
Welcome, everybody. I'm going to turn this over now to.
Thank you. You'll give me just a second. I will share my screen. Maybe you all have a copy or there's copies of the presentation. Back table. All right, and we'll just get started. Um, so for tonight, our agenda will be, um, let's list it on the screen. We'll talk a little bit about zero-based budgeting. Um, our budget development timelines, our webpages. Um, the state of Oregon budget development, since we're starting a new biennium in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, student tuition fee recommendations, collection program fee recommendations. We'll talk a little bit about where our reserves are. And then we'll get into our requested budget assumptions. And of course, always ask questions as we go, or if you'd like to wait till the end, you can do that as well. So for twenty-five, twenty-six, this will be our second year of zero-based budgeting. And we really have moved to zero-based budgeting, so we can focus on the why. Uh, making sure that every expense is justified, and we know what we're, we're looking at. Um, given a zero-based budget, we're looking forward. We're not looking behind of what we've done in the past, or what our average costs were. We're really looking in the forward of what, what do we need to do? And how are we, um, how much is that going to cost? We're able to make strategic decisions, especially with all of our budget managers providing input into their budgets. Um, having their deans review them, their VPs, and then bringing to executive team to review as well. So lots of participation throughout this whole budget cycle. So this is our internal timeline. We started our budget process back in November. Um. Asking everyone to start looking at their budgets, creating them through November, uh, November through January. Um, and so what they put together is what we call the recommended budget. So that's the budget coming forward through the budget managers. Um, looked at by their deans and then their VPs as well. So right now, we're working on that internally. Um, and next week, we will take it forward to ETM to review. With the board, um, your participation starts this month with tuition and fee recommendations as a first. Review and then adoption next month, and then when we get into May and June, the proposed budget will come forward for review with the budget committee. One of the things that we have noticed as we've been going through this is budget managers are much more comfortable using and going forward with, um. Asking for what they need as they're moving forward. So when we get to our. Oh, sorry, um. Our projections, you'll see what they're looking at. As always, we have our budget development webpage for twenty-five, twenty-six available. Um, there is comprehensive information out there. It grows weekly, monthly, as we move through things. We still have our budget advisory team and our budget advisory forums that are happening on a monthly basis. Um, and on this page, you'll also see historical trends, ending fund balance, um, tuition and fees, um, state. Um, community college support fund, how much we receive there as well. As I mentioned, we're starting off a new biennium with the state. Um, and so one of the things I wanted to put together is what that looks like and what budgets come forward as we go and start moving into, um, the legislative session. Um, so there's three major phases of the state budget process. This is outside of what community colleges put together for OCCA. Um, and move forward with what community colleges recommend is their CSL or, um. Current service level. So when we look at the agency requested budget, that's developed, um, by DAS CFO. They provide the guidelines, and then the heck puts together a budget. Then we have in December where the governor comes out with their budget, and it reflects the governor's priorities, their budget policies and current law. And then once those are all put together, the legisla- legislators, um, get together. And they adopt a budget, and that's what becomes the legislatively adopted budget or the LAB. Something that's different this year than it has been in the past is the ARB and the GRB are the same. And that, um, is interesting to me. I haven't seen that very often. Usually those are different. So usually when we go into a new biennium, we're talking about four different budgets. You have OCCAs, you have the ARB, you have the GRB, and then you end up with the LAB or the legislatively adopted budget. So right now, I just wanted to give you, um, an example of where we are right now. So we have the twenty-three, twenty-five adopted, um, budget for community college. Community colleges. So the total funding for that was eight hundred and fourteen million. There is money that's taken off the top for other support that doesn't come directly to community colleges or flow through. Um, the community college support fund. So. Really what we were appropriated was the seven hundred and ninety-five point eight million for twenty-three, twenty-five. You can see going forward that the governor's recommended budget and the agency's recommended budget is eight hundred and seventy million. Um, and then really what will flow through the formulas is the eight hundred and fifty-four million and not the eight hundred and seventy million. One of the largest changes here on this page under the variances is the hundred and sixty point seven percent increases the set-asides. That has to do with the student support and student success portions. It's going from twelve point five million in the current biennium to fifty million next biennium. So that's why you're seeing such a large increase there. So this is just another, um, visual presentation of what things look like, and I can walk through this a little bit as well. Um, the twelve-two point two million dollars for set-asides, that has to do with corrections contracted at a district. Distance learning and also the strategic fund. I'm happy to explain any of those. Um, for anyone who doesn't know the details. Um, the corrections is really for prisoners to take community college courses. Um, contracted out of district is anybody who's not in a community college district can take a class at a community college. And then certain colleges are reimbursed for that. Distance learning funds efforts to increase distance learning programs at all districts. And then our strategic fund is statewide initiatives and provides funding for districts to meet new legislative requirements. And those are competitive usually processes. With the fifty million for student support, student success, um, twenty-one million will actually flow through that portion of the formula in twenty-five, twenty-six. And the remainder will flow through in, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And if you remember, student support is based on headcount. There's still a weighted average within that formula. And any additional weighting for students in multiple priority populations. With our student success measures, it includes progression and completion metrics using a three-year weighted average with additional weighting for priority populations as well.
So that's a chunk that's. Hmm. That's a chunk. We'll, we will get some of that probably.
We will get, yes, and we actually get a slightly higher percentage of that than we do through the formula.
And that's relatively new. It's only been the last two years or three years.
This is the first year we've actually implemented, and the dispersment, our first dispersment was in January. Um, based on the audited numbers they put through. And then next year, it'll be fifty million rather than the twelve point five.
I find out what they didn't get right this time.
The following biennium is targeted for seventy-five million, and in the following after that, it'll be ten percent of the CCSF moving forward.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, um, it's the col- the, the state's attempt at equivalent of a performance-based funding model.
With that, I will point out that there's eight equal payments within the biennium. All the payments happen in the biennium with the FTE portion of the dispersment. So that's our, um, historical formula. Um, we have that weird eighth quarter payment that's pushed off into the future, pulled back from the future. Um, and so the distributions are slightly different on how they do those two portions of the formula. But seven hundred and ninety-two million will flow through, um, that portion of the formula. So I wanted to bring tuition and free recommendations that we will be bringing forward today to this, um, meeting as well, because it is impacted by the budgets. Or has an impact on the budget. So you can see on the slide, this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five annualized tuition and fees. So the average, um, for the community colleges is six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. And then for RCC, it's six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. To get to the average for the current year would be an additional three dollars and thirty-three cents per credit to get there.
It might be worth pointing out on this one real quick, too. Um, it wasn't very long ago, we were the third highest in the state, and now we're below average because we've held tuition while our. Peer institutions have risen anywhere from four to six dollars a year, every year.
So preliminarily, um, business managers, we start talking, so I can't tell you any specific information, but. I can say that the average is higher than what we're bringing for it as a recommendation. So our recommendation is two dollars per credit. Um, and so the others I have seen, I think the lowest I calculated was around three.
Yes.
Three fifty. So one of the questions we're always asked is how does this impact with Pell? And so, um, Frankie provided information to me today. About that. And so, um, we put it together for full-time students at fifteen credits is the first line there. So annualized tuition. And this isn't tuition and fees. The first number I gave you was tuition and our universal fee. Which is twenty-four dollars per credit, and then it caps out at fifteen credits. This is just our annualized tuition. And so you can see at full-time at fifteen credits. Um, there's, um, a little bit of, um, a difference between the annualized tuition and the annualized Pell amount. Um, and then full-time for financial aid is twelve credits. So I've also provided twelve credits for you. Um, nine credits at three-quarters time, and then seven credits at halftime.
Is, can you hear me? I've had my hand raised for a while and nobody's noticing.
Oh, sorry. Kevin, go ahead.
Uh. I, your screen sharing stopped for me. All of a sudden, I just see the people, not, not whatever information you're sharing. I don't know if everybody else can see it.
Yes. I can see it.
I can.
Okay, I'll, I'll work on my end then.
Hey. I apologize. We might double-check. There's a lot of movement parts here. I think full Pell at the top right is probably a number that could or should be higher, I think.
No, it maxes out.
Cause.
It maxes out at twelve credits, so they feel that twelve credits is, um, full-time per Pell, and so it actually doesn't go up, up, up.
I don't mean that. I was thinking full Pell is about seventy-six hundred dollars right now. Or.
Remember, it's that Frankie and I worked on.
Okay, let me.
That's a number that seems familiar to me also. I'm not sure where that came from.
Seventy-three, ninety-five is what it says on. A full Pell.
I'll have to ask.
Yeah, we'll double-check that, uh. Cause typically, it, you can expect that full Pell would cover total tuition and fees within a year. She's probably got a way to explain this with, with a new SAI is a new calculation formula, but that's.
Yeah.
Circle with her on that.
Yeah, she's not available tonight, and, uh, I'm not able to answer any questions about the SAI.
Okay.
So moving on, is there any other questions that I may or may not be able to answer on?
You said the first line is fifteen credits, right? Into twelve.
Okay. So we're not asking for a change in our universal fees. B. And what we are bringing forward is changes to our course and program fees. And I just wanted to remind everyone of, um, our philosophy that we've had. Um, is we bring forward course and program fees for high-class courses, and we, um. Consider high-class courses anything with specialized equipment and technology needs, limited enrollment, um, or low faculty to student, student ratios. Um, college provided, um, instructional supplies, and then any required practicum lab or clinical hours. So the first few fees we have is diesel EMS and fire science. And what I've. Provided here is not what the fee will be, what its increase or decrease will be. What is increasing to. Actually, what the increase is. That they're bringing forward.
The full, the full stuff's in our board packet for later.
Full stuff is in your board packet. And I only provided this time in the board packet in here, the fees that are changing. So I did not bring forward all the list of all the fees. Last year, I was asked not to bring that forward. It was too confusing. So I only brought forward the fees that are changing. Um, with H per, which is on our next page, um, those are all increasing. The largest increase there has to do with, um, special studies this. Um, I'm sorry, the ziplining. And that has to do with, um, it's really not a increase. Um, the zipline company, the students used to pay them directly, and now they need to pay us, and we'll pay the zipline comp- company for them to participate. And a lot of these are pass-through fees because they are going somewhere or using an outside resource that charges as well. And then they. Go ahead.
Lisa, I don't know whether you can. Put this together in such a way, it, it looked like particularly for the emergency medical services and fire science. The increase was very substantial. What's the impact? On a typical student. Throughout their entire program. I mean, this is. Now, I'm trying to get a handle on, okay, we're, we're going to increase it by two hundred bucks, for instance, okay? Um, so, uh, and that's a term, I take it.
It's a class.
It's a class, okay.
Class that they take, so they should take it once.
Well, you can see they're sequential, so you wouldn't be taking them in the same term.
Okay, but, okay, so, so let's assume that a, a typical student takes three classes, for instance, okay? So does that mean that their, their, um, fees now are going to go up, um, what another, uh. Six hundred bucks for the term?
If they're taking those three classes that are increasing.
So, so Juliette, can you help me and correct me if I'm wrong? I think, so like you see paramedic care and practice one, care and practice two, they wouldn't probably be taking those simultaneously. They'd be taking them in consecutive terms. So you wouldn't take like one, two, and three all in the same term and have the six hundred. You'd have the two hundred one term, two hundred the next term, two hundred the following term. Is that, I'm looking to phone a friend here.
Okay, well, that makes sense, but they're typically taking two other classes, and what I think we're, we're really hearing here. Is maybe those fees are only going up by ten or twenty bucks as opposed to a couple hundred bucks.
And Juliette, is there any chance you can provide a little light on like how, how the considerations are made when we're looking at adding these fees, these course fees on for programs?
So when the department builds for the EMS and fire science and paramedic, they're looking at a lot of actual costs, like turnouts. Sure. Expensive and replacing the turnouts and the materials they use when you put out a fire and you use. Materials to put out that fire and chemicals, all that has to be replaced. So they have a pretty extensive.
I'm not questioning the fact that we've got to cover costs, obviously. What I'm trying to get a feeling is if. Right now, if a student in that program, let's say that they can, their program's, let's say, six terms. Okay, the. Total amount of that we're adding on to their cost, X plus something. Uh, are we adding must be three or four thousand dollars to the, the cost of their program by the accumulated fees that they're going to, is it that high?
Well, I'd have to go, cause I could take the program planner and look at the fees for each course that they take in each term.
Yeah.
So I could calculate that out, but.
I'm just trying to get a feel for it, because, you know, it's an expensive program to begin with, and. Um. Hopefully, uh, those students, um, have some help somewhere along the line. And I suspect that a lot of them. Get some help from the department that they're going to go to or through scholarships or whatever. I, I'm just trying to get a feel for saying, okay, this is a pretty expensive program. I don't think I can afford to do that. And now it's even going to go up by another four thousand bucks.
There's a lot of external resources that help these students pay, and in the spirit of phoning a friend, where's Dave?
Fire science.
Yeah, so.
Most of those students are coming from industry.
Yeah.
Employed, right?
They do, and we, we also look at, um, the cost of other programs around the state. We'll get to that, cause I want to compare, and we make sure that we're not as expensive. Um. However, our program is very comparable to the mechanism.
Yeah. And so we look at that, uh, and we're saying in line with where we're going to be. Um, and the students do get, uh, some scholarships in some big board. Out there, um, and, uh, many of them are also working or employers who pay, uh, the Paul calls there.
Okay, all right. Well, well, let me ask the question a different way. Um. I'm, I'm looking at what their remaining debt is after they get through with the program. They get all finished. Hey, okay, well, I've got two hundred thousand dollars worth of payments now that I gotta make. Payments on for the next rest of my life. How high does that typically get for that type of student?
That's a, that's a fair question, and that's something that we are very much, um, focused on, making sure that they're not coming out with massive amounts of debt. Um, so that is a consideration that we look at for sure. Uh, I don't have the, the number for you, what the average student comes out. In debt.
All part.
I don't have, I have no idea.
Oh, okay.
It really, I mean, Roger, it is so dependent, like, like if it's a student who is self-pay and does not have any external resources. I mean, one of the things that tends, that, that, that contributes to student debt. Is the cost of living.
Sure.
And so one of the things that we can do to, to negatively impact the students is take a program and lengthen it out. Here's the worst thing they can do is not get into the workforce. So when we compress the program, try to get it through it. And, and so I, I, I'm not trying to discount in any way hundreds of dollars in a term, uh, to a student, but if we can get them to and through that program quicker, that's the best thing we can do for them. We keep costs down and we're entering on the, the reality here that we face, and we've talked about this in years prior. Is that these are real costs that we have to decide, do we pass it on the participant at the high-cost program? Who, upon successful completion, is going to be uniquely qualified for a job that's going to pay living wage day one. Or is this a fee that we pass on to all students and, in some way through a tuition or an institutional fee? And we, we've ma- we've made the conscious choice for some of these programs. That are leading to stronger and better paying jobs that cost more for delivery, that we can do that. There are community colleges across the country where that's part of what they, they, they dedicate local tax money. We don't have that lever to be able to pull on and say. This is our local workforce. These are the trained workforce that we want, and we'll pay extra for it. We don't have that, so it has to come from somewhere. So it does come from the users and to be able to say what the, I mean, there will be students who go through this program. And they're doing fine. Their employer pays for it. They're making good money while they're working, and then there'll be self-paid students who may walk out. But I would say a high, a high debt departure for us as a community college student. High debt departure is in the teens, high teens. It's, it's not going to be common for a student to walk away from RCC with. More than twenty thousand dollars worth of debt. Our financial aid department has been working very aggressively with that student to try to avoid that. I mean, it happens. It may be a student going through the nursing program, is exhausted some Pell, and maybe they got a bachelor's degree already, so there's things like that sometimes. But our financial aid department works really close with students to try to defer deferred debt. Our foundation comes into the equation. These programs are often some of the easier ones for them to raise some additional scholarship money for.
Sure. Okay. Yes, so the total program cost currently for paramedicine is, uh, sixteen point one. That includes all the out-of, out-of-pocket expenses, including the tuition and the.
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand one hundred.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, these additions would increase it by another twelve hundred dollars over the course of the two-year program.
It is eighteen thousand dollars. It's still a lesson you're going to pay to attend one of our.
I realize you guys aren't pulling numbers out of the air, work real hard to kind of, you know, keep it under, I just. We, we, we're being asked here to approve something, and I want to kind of, what's the impact on those students?
Well, and it's healthy for us to be able to talk to her and say that we know that the best interest of students are protected through this conversation. So this is something. We're comfortable with you, not just rubber stamping, and, and if the day you quit caring about students, and, and the day we should start worrying.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Any questions on the H per? Thanks, Labs. They're asking to increase those an additional ten dollars for each lab.
And then finally, massage. They used to have a program fee. It was charged to all students in their program. They'd like to move to a course fee. They have full-time and part-time students. And so that fifteen dollar per fee per class was more equitable amongst all their students. I believe they also have some that come in that are not actually part of the program, taking classes as well. Um, to go back to fire science and EMS, we have talked to them about doing a program fee, so it was much more, um, like, uh, nursing. And, and dental hygiene, so you could see what the, the fee is per term or throughout. And not just by course. We're just not ready to do that yet, as they're still reviewing and seeing what that would look like for students. So our next topic is reserves, and I just wanted to bring back our policy is unrestricted budgeted reserve shall not be less than five percent of total budgeted operating funds. And then we also have, um, what we put together as our reserve philosophy, and I'll make sure that's on the current, um. Development webpage, so you can read through the whole philosophy, but essentially the college endeavors to maintain the stability and curves reserve at a, a minimum of three months or twenty-five percent. Of the maximum of six months, fifty percent of cash outflows. Um, the target date to reach the minimum reserve level will be evaluated in conjunction with other reserve investment needs. And so, um, we don't need to worry about making it to the minimum. We are there. Um, and so I've put together, um, we have twenty million dollars of reserves. Um, seven point one is purse reserve. Our stability reserve is five point three, and then we have reinvestment reserves of eight point. One of the things I will mention is our two thousand and five purse bond is coming to an end in twenty twenty-seven. And so what the state has done is they have estimated, um, our last year of, um. Payments from our reserve, not our reserve, but from our, um, site account, um, from our bond, um, how much they'll put in monthly. They've also estimated, um, how much our discount will be in that last year. And so we will have a little bit of a shortfall, so we'll be using part of those purse reserves, because we won't be receiving that discount anymore. Um, and we'll need to pay the full purse rate during that time as well as our last bond payment. So we'll be pulling about one point one to one point three million out of that purse reserve to make those payments. Um, other colleges don't have that purse reserve, and they're finding other ways to make those payments, just.
So the discount's going away?
Hmm.
The discount's going away?
The discount is going away, but what happens is when your discount goes away, your bond payment goes away, so those should be very close, so it shouldn't be.
Okay.
A significant increase. There may be an increase.
So to reconsider moving forward, the only time you would want the discount is when your bond payment's at a much lower interest rate than it is today.
Right.
So I wanted to bring you through the requested budget assumptions. I've got the glasses. And so the revenue assumptions that we have here is a two dollar per increase, um, and credit tuition. Um, our course fees increasing as we've mentioned. And I just, again, some facts that we've put in here, fun facts. A dollar of tuition increase is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, enrollment, our assumption will be a four percent increase in tuition-bearing credits. So remember, there are, um, credits that we offer for free in our general fund. We also have, um, other. Credits and other, um, funds as well. So we're talking just general fund here. And one percent of tuition-bearing credits is a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Other, we have interest revenue, indirect costs, facility rentals. Those are types of things that you'll see in the general fund, and those have been increased for what we were projecting. I will say our interest revenue, as you're looking at the financial statements monthly, that's coming down on a monthly basis. Property taxes within the community college support fund. Because the community college support, support fund considers property taxes as part of total public resources. We do look to see what they have in there and our levies went up four point two percent. That's what they have in the formula. So that's what we're averaging, so that's what we're using. Community college support fund, we are going with the governor's recommended budget of eight hundred fifty million, eight hundred and seventy million, back down to the eight fifty-four. And then transfers in, we do have a financial aid overhead that we receive, so that transfers in. And our expenditure assumptions and benefits, we have the average increase for past five years. This is just for budgeting purposes. We will say that our pers rate did increase significantly for the new biennium at five and a half percent. So that's over a million dollars. Materials and services, everything's been zero-based, so you'll see that. And then the accounting changes that we have, that I will explain in a minute. Again, capital zero-based, accounting changes there as well. And then I just wanted to highlight the transfers out of the general fund to the other funds and what those things are for, what funds they're going to. There any questions on the assumptions? So, you mean first that you're going to roll over your glasses? I didn't know where they went, so I was like, I thought they went down there. I was like, I'm just going to keep going. I can relax.
I have a question.
We are retiring, do you, go ahead. Kevin, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask what the trends are showing with pers. I, I, I seem to recall that it was around twenty twenty-five that the pers makeup of lost past expenses would, would start to diminish, the curve would go down. Is that true or are we still looking at years of these high pers rates?
I thought it was close to twenty thirty, where tier one with beneficiaries would change, the number of them would change. I'm sorry. So I think it's still a few years off. We're also seeing that the actuaries have changed life expectancies, which has changed the rate and then how much interest is earned on, on pers funds. And so that is changing as, as well, which creates a larger unfunded actuary liability, which increases our rates. So those things are happening. I've also noticed that op cert rates are increasing at the same rate as tier one, tier two rates for us, which is unusual. Those used to increase just a tiny bit, but those also went up close to five and a half percent. So I don't think we're seeing those. I think it's a few more years, Kevin.
Yeah, no relief in sight, too bad.
So with our accounting changes, we are retiring the renewal and replacement fund and we're moving that into the general fund. So you'll see a large change when you look at our projections on our, on the next slide. With capital equipment, that is mainly coming from the renewal and replacement. And we're just, again, trying to consolidate into one fund as much as possible to go through funds.
It'll still show as a separate account. How, how is that going to remain visible?
So the transfer out that used to happen is not happening and we just put it in as an expense in capital. And so let me switch to the next page. And you'll see it right here in capital. Where in prior years, in twenty-three, twenty-four, it's forty-eight thousand. And then twenty-five, twenty-six, it's one point three. So that's where we've moved it in.
That's where we'll see it.
That's where you'll see it. So all of the, I'm sorry, all of the assumptions I just went through are here. If you look towards the bottom of the page, the proposed adjustments, this is where the zero-based budgeting has come in. And you can see that there's a large dollar amount. So what I wanted to also say is that we have been working on a four-year plan to have our resources equal to or exceed our expenses. And if you look in twenty-three, twenty-four, actual, our resources, it seems are extended. And if you look at twenty-four, twenty-five, projected, our total resources are expected to outperform our total expenses. In twenty-five, twenty-six, again, E-team has some work to do at looking at our requests and overall budget to try and help balance those a little bit. As well as this is when you're looking at the projected and actual, that's what happened. And you remember, there's a variance between budget and what actually happens. We are working on reducing that variance, but there is still some variance built in here at this time.
So the homework we have ahead of us as an E-team and leadership team is to, to, you know, we're pretty, pretty locked in on what we think the resources will be at around fifty-two point three million. Is looking at the sixty-one point two million and, and seeing, seeing what we can do to, to, to work that down. But that's, this is, this is one of the natural processes with zero-based. You know, we ask people to do your jobs next year, what would you like to see in support? And we are presenting to you today before we have, not working for us, but the work between today and the first budget committee meeting will be workshopping that, that number. And, and there's a couple of things that will happen to, to do so. So it's, it's not overly alarming. This is kind of at least a reference to year one, what happens if people bring pretty tight budgets. And then year two, they're like, oh, I kind of see how this works. I'm not going to get it if I don't ask for it. So they asked for it, now we have to kind of, to, to work through that number together. I, I will tell you, we probably, I, I can say with confidence, we won't be bringing a sixty-one point three million dollar expenditure ask.
You're going to bring the hatchets out, huh?
We, we, that's, that, yes, we'll be doing some work behind the scenes. But, but this is an important part of the process. And one of the things that zero bases really allowed us to do as a college is allow departments to start thinking about the year and ahead, ahead. Oftentimes, what has happened in the past is people like, okay, well, now that we have our budget, we're in the fall. Let's talk about the work we're going to do this year. And then they find out it takes four or five months to plan that work. Now they've begun that planning and that intentionality, you know, well in advance. And so once they know what their resources are, they're hitting the ground running based on the plan that that's been executed. So we'll, we'll continue to get better at this as, as we go. But, but in years moving forward, we probably anticipate seeing a gap like this. Then we, different than how we saw it when it came forward with incremental. Last year was a treat year that we didn't have this phenomenon.
It'll be fun to have this different conversation.
You really need that, that's how it starts with the.
That's all I have prepared for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Couple familiar faces. I know, we can't see everybody, but I think our newest budget committee member, Jennifer, is with us. So maybe could you, or could we, could maybe remove that so we can see everybody on the screen? If there's any questions and pop it back up if we need to. Oh, Jennifer wasn't able to join us.
In the attendees.
Oh, she's in the attendees, okay.
Jay, do you see anything in there that you want, have a question about? No, looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, could you remind us of the, the initial budget committee meeting is when?
It is in May, and I think it's a week or two before the May board.
Yeah, I think I've seen it somewhere.
Twenty-fifth, does that sound right? May thirteenth, sorry.
Yeah, I think it's the week before, and then May twentieth is the board meeting. Let me just switch it a little bit.
And one of the things that happened two years ago was the, the revenue projections leading to the final adopted budget, the L A B, changed significantly. And as a result, a number of agencies, C C S F being one of them, or, you know, funds benefited positively. We don't see that happening. We've changed the budget forecaster a little bit. Priorities have been set and articulated pretty clearly. One of the things with the governor's recommended budget this year that's a little bit different than in years past was she told agencies, do not ask for greater than one percent higher than C S L for next year. You know, like we've got priorities and agency budgets, you know, unless we tell you that there's not going to be one of them. So it's one of the reasons why we've not, we didn't, we haven't seen the disparity that we've historically seen between the agency's requested budget and the governor's recommended. So we're, and we're not, you know, what we're not seeing in Salem on a daily basis is, you know, long sessions begun is this desperate cry from legislators, like what can we do more and better for colleges? So one of the things that they've said over and over is, yes, we recognize that there are increased revenues. We need you to understand there are significantly increased expenses too. You know, one of the is the reality that the federal subsidy for Medicaid is going away. And so now the state's on the hook just to maintain that program by like a billion dollars or something. And so there's, there's, uh, they're, they're not looking for a lot of things to, to spend more on. So hopefully, revenue projections are good and we can do better than maybe the governor's recommended budget. But I think we would all be surprised to see an increase similar to what we saw last biennium. The other thing worth, worth pointing out a little bit is you know, the way the funding formula works, we have not realized support for all of our growth. We have, we saw the growth management cap, meaning we, we, we get what's allowable to be reimbursed for F T E. So we turn in reimbursable F T E that we don't receive reimbursement on because we've exceeded the cap. So it's been great to grow. It's been the right thing to do for our community. But, but it hasn't been supported in the way it would have been fully had we, had we not hit the cap. So we, we have to keep those kinds of things in, in mind as we're looking at what program support are we looking at, at moving forward with.
What's been the biggest surprise to you around zero-based budgeting as you've transitioned to it now for year two?
How much is supported, actually? I only really hear, and maybe they're just wondering, I only hear good feedback from individuals. Natalie spends a lot of time and has open sessions working with people and people really appreciate the ability to get in there and provide their information. And there's lots of notes. I like that too. So you can see what they're thinking and talk, you know, why they're asking for it. For me, that's a big change where we just incrementally budgeted and hoped that they were, you know, understood why we were giving it to them and what they were going to do with it. And so to be able to see that, where they're going.
Always interesting to reflect, you know, you're getting through a year and you're like, okay, made it through that year. Now what do we need to do differently or?
Yeah, it's just interesting to change the philosophy and having more, more people participating has been kind of joyful.
I, I, I don't know about a surprise. I like, I know you didn't ask me. I like that, that people have more ownership, you know, I, I incremental, I often reference as kind of an allowance model. Here's your allowance, you know, spend it wisely. And that's a lot different than, tell us what you'd like to accomplish next year and what resources you need to do so. And we'll see what we can do to support that. Sometimes we want to support it, we don't have the resources. Sometimes we might say, yeah, it's probably not going to be a priority next year because it conflicts with this other priority. But most of the times we have an understanding, okay, this is what they want to do. And so it allows us to, to understand. And, and, and so it's not uncommon in a process like this, when we get it this way. And part of the things that will, will reduce this number is that unintentionally, three different areas will either request the same support, which we only need to do once, but we realize, okay, now we're seeing this. Or by supporting request A from department, this department, it's in conflict with request B from the other. So we're going to have to just pick one because both couldn't be successful. And it's just that transparent process that, 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 that it brings out.
I like that ownership of the planning and supporting the students' goals. All right, any other questions on the presentation? Okay, any questions on items on the regular meeting agenda? Any, thank you very much, budget committee members for joining us today for this. We appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you as we continue this process. All right. Anything else? Okay, we'll adjourn the work session and start back up again at five.